Perfect. All right, the call is made in order, please stand up.
I deliver this to the flag of the United States of America and to the red flag for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, also in our mission statement and partnership with community submission of the Dilver Plan and Self School District is to educate individuals in their trust and respect so they become self worth responsible by law and mercy. Okay, we have all board members present. We also have superintendent listed, we have our elementary principal Joel Keith, our community director Chris Thompson, Brooke Felker, Nikki Knowles from the district office, and we have Matt and Lee. Hi guys.
How are you doing?
Welcome. I don't think anybody's, I don't know, public comments today. So, um, we're gonna move on, 5.2 rebel recognition, oh, I'm sorry, sorry Ronnie, I'm trying to go in here early, I just, what's the agenda? I always forget that, I'm sorry. Do you have a motion to, uh, any changes to the agenda?
Yeah, so I was gonna, I just wanna make sure, 10.4, I think you guys all have it right now, but this resolution is the LTF, resolution has something that we've nice that a few hours on today, let's just say, and so I wanna make sure it's on there and think again, so that is something that changed since we sent it out a week ago.
Okay.
Yep.
Indeed, does he even have a resolution to read tonight? Yep, got it, perfect.
And like I said, I just turned along after the superintendent support for another letter down the road, I was just requested to be in front of the rest of the staff.
Okay, I, yeah, okay, perfect, appreciate it. All right, do we have a motion to adopt the agenda? So, motion by the board, sir, second.
Sir.
Second, I did, can all the members say aye?
I don't think so.
The post motion carries. All right, no public comments, um, 5.2 rebel recognition, go team, what's going on in this school district? Fourteen youths, uh, girls, one state at this weekend, that was exciting, uh, we got the vote, so, where was it at here?
Um, cities.
Okay.
So still, it's been worked children all night.
She said she was okay. Uh, she said it was a long day yesterday, but the girls were fantastic and she was really excited and so, yeah, they jumped, that was cool.
Yeah, very cool. Any other things happening? I'm excited to hear Daisy wrap up tonight, I'm sure she fell out of highlights, um, so local days last weekend, now blended days this weekend, so, um, get out there if you can and enjoy the festivities, it's hot.
The pancake breakfast was outstanding Friday morning in the west side, so I had the breakfast with Ron and Amy, so we did a, uh, the sheriff, so, you're on the right side of that, so.
All right, all right, let's move on, 6.1, all right, so Matt and Lee, you have our construction report, welcome.
Thank you.
So, um, we have the agenda, what would you like?
Right, so I don't care, you know, if you guys, Matt or Lee wants to go first, who wants to kinda talk about where they're at, and then obviously, part of tonight's meeting too then is to introduce some of these changes and costs that you guys are feeling from subcontractors yourselves, so that's part of your report too, so I guess I'll just leave it up to you guys to kinda share, remember, yeah, for sure to you, Matt.
Yeah, definitely, start with the, uh, construction update. Uh, so, Lyndon, um, over here, you guys can see the balance, and so I think last time we updated, the building is all completely done, uh, which is gonna be the new columns, and we're working on, uh, infill pad foundations within there, that the steel is gonna connect to the new steel is gonna connect to, and our foundations on the outside, which is gonna be the new offices, um, so that'll be the next step, so we're definitely focusing in on the kitchen area right now, um, and getting that to a point where, um, we can get that turned over as soon as possible. Um, from there in the area B Commons, you'll see the steel start going up and then the roof going on, and they'll start kind of enclosing and looking at the building again, so. Uh, area E and F is the gym addition, um, and the new athletic entrance, uh, the precast is obviously up, there's steel joists are all but a couple installed, uh, we ran into a little bit of a coordination issue with the last two panels that need to be, uh, finished up, in that, uh, we get the precast complete 100% and the joists leave 100%, but we're working on a fix for that here this week, uh, so you'll probably be seeing the joists be wrapped up and then panels being closed off on the southwest end, and then our steel continuing in the new athletic entrance, south to the west from there, inside the building, at the new locker rooms, um, the joists are complete, they have to put some, um, split joists in there for the snow load, they could accommodate, um, any snow load issues that you guys previously had, and, uh, got the plumbing, the indoors, um, complete, and the trenches infill and now masonry in the, uh, the west locker room is wrapping up and they're moving into these locker rooms, um, so from there, the plumbing, uh, contractor, uh, will get all their above ground roughings done and get all the shower, um, shower stuff roughed in, sort of moving forward with that. Uh, there's, everybody can probably see the mess, uh, Jurassic Park, we're starting that area, and we're taking out the dirt that's required for the soil correction, and hopefully here this week they'll be done with that and get that all cleaned up and, uh, out of your way, and the installation is gonna come, the new, uh, correct soil is going to be a little bit easier, we hope, and we hope that they can essentially belt that over the building and get that in place rather than kind of go through the school, so.
Just give a bucket of gator for all the kids, maybe just take their.
Trying to think of anything else at Lyndon, anybody have any questions, Lyndon?
I have one question over the weekend about, do we have any sprinkler issues in the cafeteria down here, or is that just rumors?
I've heard of today.
I thought the sprinkler line, it broke the sprinkler line, that's all.
Like I said, you get these rumors floating around.
Was there a master?
No, um, I haven't heard anything on that, might be a rumor, but I know we did have the boys locker room.
Yep, and the boys locker room was a separate issue, there was water coming out the rug, we had to adjust for another day, and we, uh, just take care of ourselves, so.
Yeah, I am getting quote for our contractor on the project, just a quote, to see how much of the cost is gonna be put it back together, being they are outside here, so, and that's something that we'll just bring up to you guys if you make that decision.
Yep, I have that conversation today. Yep, and it'll be taken care of, uh, it sounds like it'll start up later this week, I was gonna get materials tomorrow, so we're just not gonna. I did just, and I guess I'm like, I did walk around today too with crap.
Yep, that's what he said.
Yep, so it'd be good, it's been a good to update, uh, the book here, and, uh, we had Marvel and Wayne and Tracy themselves with crap, so, yeah, that was a good, good walk around.
Hey, over at the Dilver site, um, the gym joists are complete, and there is, uh, no issues, we have the precast fully enclosed over there, so they've got that detailed intact, and, uh, we'll produce that raise all the precast up, we'll be coming down this week, if they're not ready, and, uh, we'll be backfilling that in with their final grades, um, and then from there, the mechanical contractors can do their, um, underground installations and just move forward there. Um, the office addition, area C, the steel is up to essentially a point that it can for that area, until we get our way through the, uh, the corridor with our steel joists, get to where that we best build ties both buildings together, and then we'll get that all tightened in and, uh, wrapped up for steel. Um, area C classrooms, um, we've had some unforeseen conditions in the area C classrooms, there was some tunnels, um, that run throughout there that we didn't know about, because we got the flooring broken off, and so we've got a mitigation plan for all that there, we got some, some steel to dig here last week, and we can get those tunnels enclosed in all the one classroom, we have to, um, feed that up quite a bit with some in tile steel beams and columns, and we're hoping to get that here within end of this week, next week, possibly, and then we can get that last classroom, um, tunnels in filled, and, uh, we've gotten to a point where we can sheet rock and continue on the walls, and so when you do get the tunnels in filled, you can just put the cabinets up and turn it over a little bit quick, uh, but the timing to do that, we're not 100% sure, it depends on when we get the steel, um, but all the other classrooms are on track, I think they're, um, finishing the gypsum now against their paint feed, and I think our s- casework is scheduled to deliver sometime next week, I believe, so we'll just start seeing casework going in a very surprise. And casework flooring and ceiling tiles will follow, and that's gonna be right for schools, so we'll have to clean every week and turn it over.
Will those classrooms be ready for this block?
Correct, all but that one, we're hope, we're still hoping at that one where there's that additional steel within the tunnels that we have to do, but it's gonna be really close, and I'm not 100% confident, confident myself, so I guess, but it's gonna be close, and I believe there is a mitigation plan for that on top of it, so.
And Matt, that's the one where the tunnel was under the partition wall, right?
Yep, yep, well, we are, yep.
When you talk about tunnels, I've got something in my mind, um, what are, what are the tunnels for, what they, they?
They weren't shown on any original documents that I have.
So, so the building has tunnels in it that we were aware of, and those were used for, generally for piping, I think there was actually a couple that had some ductwork in that tunnel, um, unfortunately, these weren't on original drawings and were, I didn't have the conversation with James, but I heard, that's true or not, but I heard James wasn't aware of me either, so I, you know, unfortunately, they're there, I can't ignore them once they're opened up, um, the, the one I'm most concerned, which it's not a concern anymore because it's graced up and there will be a fix, but the one, the one that might not be ready is, the tunnel was literally under one of the walls that separated two classrooms, so we're kind of wondering what was holding that thing up to begin with, um, but it was, I mean, it held up, so that's good news, and now we know about it, so.
That's next number here.
Now we know about it, so we'll take care.
So that's one, whoever added the steel, the columns, everything, to make sure that when we leave it, we're leaving it in a sturdy condition, so.
So they're not human tunnels, they were tunnels for other?
For mechanical systems, plumbing systems, yep.
We saw one of my open schools, yeah.
Most schools have tunnels, and it's for the ductwork, it's for the piping, it's for water, it's for electrical or wiring.
Tunnels for those, that age, that era of buildings, um, I mean, we still do that from time to time, but it's not, try to avoid that for some obvious reasons, with moisture and all things that.
Which part of the school was this tunnel in, and where's it at?
It's in those, uh, area C classrooms.
The northeast wing.
Yep. Existing northeast wing.
Inside the building, condition out for the outside.
Yep.
The, the plan is if that one isn't ready, that Joe and I will do with them too, is that we'll have a music teacher probably be on a cart for one week, and then that class can use the music for the intel, that's, if we need it, and, and, yeah, I think it may be a week at the most, the way Dennis is.
Yeah, Dennis is pretty confident that.
Yeah, he must be.
But that's not in the newest addition of northeast corner, is that the?
Uh, not the pre K, no.
The existing portion of one of those things.
Just putting the watering, so it's the water sanction all of those, that's for the individuals.
Yeah, our work is essentially casework and moving some sinks, so it's minimal work, but it's, it's a monthly scene that are adding to it, which is remodel construction, it happens a lot. Uh, media center, if you're at the media center, we're, uh, getting everything, all the finishes buttoned up on the west side, and if it's not up already, but, uh, the barrier wall that'll go from east side and the west side, will be going up here shortly, we'll start demo, uh, on the east side, and that, that construction on the east side will take us through to the end of the year, and that's where we'll be doing the learnings there, and, um, then we'll look at it up on, on the second floor, getting that all tied in between the two floors. Any questions on Dilver?
All right, Lee, you're up, any, what's going on with design challenges, or where are we at with this Jurassic Park two?
Yeah, so we've got, uh, the, the architectural portion of the infill, the science infill over here at Lyndon, architectural part is done, we met with the, had a final review meeting with the staff, uh, made some personal adjustments to cabinetry, nothing major that we call, I think mostly cabinetry and minor door location things, um, and so we're waiting to get structural, and we can't collect the drawings together for that, um, we had shared this in, I think, a couple weeks ago in our OAC meeting, that we're testing getting that out for pricing by the third week of August, um, but feedback from Tom Soplin, that worked from their standpoint, we have the finishes, if you remember, there was the other second component that we were gonna put out for pricing was enhanced or additional areas of finishes in both buildings, that's ready to send, um, the discussion we had that'd be better from a pricing standpoint, to put it out at the same time, with science infill, so that'll go up at the same time, that way all the pricing's coming back about the same time, I would say we probably at this pay test, probably late September, presentation of the board, am I right on that math, probably two to three weeks for pricing, we'll have to vet it and then present it to the board for you to review, and I guess make a decision on any, any kind of action I have for it, um, and then feedback we got is that the third item, which was the west parking lot, we're gonna just pull pat on if doing anything further with that until, I guess until you guys direct us to do all of this, so, so there was a concept for that house to move, we've vetted out a plan that everybody was fine with, but we haven't, we haven't created a, an actual proposal drawing for them to price it, so. Um, otherwise, general design wise, it was largely through shop drawing, review letter or after signing with management, it must be given various.
Yeah.
Um, there have certainly been issues that have come up, some of them unforeseen things, there have been some coordination things, there have been, you know, there are things that just come up, um, and we've been addressing those as best we can, um, there were some dimensional things that came up act, um, well, late May, actually, and addressed the foundation parts of those, uh, right away, and then there's some steel follow up, which we sent from Lyndon, we're sending the Dilver information later this week, um, and then the tunnel piece, you know, the dimension, the structural had to react to that pretty quickly and get a fix, so that they can get, get steel ordered, um.
Stains, if you guys are working.
Stains, we're working on, uh, at Dilver, we had, um, coordination issue where we had called for the floor to be removed of the original stage, which is now fire area, structural didn't have a new floor going in, so Shannon and Tracy have been part of those discussions, kind of brainstorming ways to handle that, we're proceeding with getting a, a drawing to show that flooring so that we can get price worth, and now we present it to the OAC meeting, the new OAC meeting, I love that, which is a result, um, had some discussion about signage, Tracy, I'm not sure if that's been discussed at the board level, but there was, um, desire to look at kind of buildings overall in terms of its interior signage, we had new signage called out as part of the projects of areas that were being remodeled or new areas, but we did not know when to have wholesale every sign changed, so, um, direction we got was that district's gonna consider just pulling that out from the project, the stuff we had, so we get a credit for that, you would get a credit for that, and then potentially work with a sign company, just look at the building as a whole, so I shared some information with Tracy on a company that's worked with, uh, West Harvest Schools that we're aware of, um, other than that, I think, I mean, that's kind of design wise, we're aware of things.
I can question, is this stage supposed to be a bathroom next year?
That'll be bathroom, so that's where we have new public bathrooms off of the hallway, the new commons and hallway, and then, so one side is public bathrooms, one side is, one end is, uh, the new concessions, um, and then the side facing the gym, there's, that's down at the gym level, that is, uh, fire at office and a fire storage room, there's a mix, all mix of all kinds of kind of support spaces.
Thank you. Can you say dimensional issues, was that like something wasn't as big or as small, is it supposed to be?
Correct, yeah, so we, you know, our, our normal procedure for these is we get, if there are existing drawings available, that's what you go offer, but then if things don't make sense, um, you know, you go and you field verify them, which we did, but there was some overall dimensions at Dilver, well, actually Dilver and Lyndon, um, at Dilver, it's that kind of outdoor courtyard, if you will, between the gym and the northeast classroom wing, and then the, the end of the northeast pla- northeast classroom, and that north wall, there were some dimensions that didn't match what we had in our drawings, and unfortunately, steel was either here or on its way, and so something has to be done to adjust some of that, to make up for the dimension difference. Similar issue at Lyndon, the area on the west between the, well, basically where the, wood shop and all of those areas got taken out, the distance between the classroom that's south of it, to the classroom area that's on the north side, was not matching what we had on original drawings, so, same issue, we've got steel that's there, need to essentially shorten up the length of those joists, um, at Lyndon, well, Dilver, I would say the fix is fairly straightforward, um, I won't go in all of the details, it's basically extending like bearing plates where the joists sit, it's close enough where we can make those bearing plates just wider, Lyndon's a little more complex, um, I think we came up with a solution that will minimize it, but, um, you know, it's more about the volume, the number of joists that have to be adjusted is, you know, there's a considerable number of joists, so, good thing is it's stuff they can do on site.
Right, I was just gonna say, for the joists, I think most of it can be just go modify, with, they come with extensions on them, and hopefully it's as easy as cut those extensions down.
Both of those issues get complicated by the, by the availability of materials and those subcontractors to react as well, uh, as you probably know or heard, or if you haven't heard yet, you're gonna hear more about it later tonight, uh, because of the market, because of the overall issues in our country and world, basically, there's some huge issues with material availability, turnaround times for things, that's all adding complications to things.
I'd also say this at the Dilver site, uh, there was some discovery, um, there's some asbestos in the locker ceiling, next country is connected with us, and they're gonna come in and remove it, it's not gonna do the timelines or anything because that area now didn't work through, and they're gonna work in different areas, so those might do that, so, we kind of, something else we discovered, I guess, they're, they did see it, so they're coming to take it.
Yeah, throughout both phases, we've discovered, you know, handful of times where we ran into asbestos, and they've been really reactionary here, reactive to it, so, we appreciate that.
That, that's another thing that, I mean, just, that's not uncommon, even if the district has gone through a full abatement, um, you can imagine the number of pipe fittings and the spots for all of that material to deal over the years, it's just not uncommon for something to pop up like that.
Yeah, and in this case, we just, the street, there was nothing of itself, so it's a little calm.
You guys wanna get into it this time a little bit, so later in the, the meeting, we have an area where we're gonna discuss it more, we decided if you guys wanted to present your piece as far as these changes with subcontractors, and that at this time, we can discuss it, have some, you know, later in our meeting, I think for us, it's gonna be one of those things that we're gonna probably wanna talk and visit over the next couple weeks from where we're at, so we have time to ask you guys more questions, but I think it's important for you guys, and I know you sat a talking for that, but I don't want to pass that on, and I just.
No, I did, I, I couldn't, I need to press, and I was, we are gonna be in your plane, and we can send it over to everybody, um, it's a lot of process, especially, you know, I'm just looking at medical stuff, and I'm looking at these, and I'm like, that's why we have these lovely people, so, leave us in chat, so if you would, would ever.
Yeah, I, I guess I would like to just, so that's done, so that if you guys wanna, you know, you don't sit here all night, sure, we'll be doing that with you.
Yep, yep, perfect, yep.
Yeah, I can kind of give just an overall where we're at with it, I know we talked about it at Thunder Pond, and numbers were 100% finalized, and, you know, since then, we've, um, put a lot of pressure on contractors to sign what we consider, what we sent it to them was a no cost change order, and that's changing our construction date from August of 2021 to August of 2022, um, throughout the process of rephasing, and we talked about it in some of the, uh, state review items, and we didn't get to start when we, um, initiated shut up for the bidding from Edith Project, um, and so within that, we made sure that we had a, essentially a response from every contractor, whether that was either signing the no cost change order, just affecting the substantial completion date, or getting some sort of acknowledgement from them that they've had, um, material increases because of the volatile market with, with material right now, uh, in total, we've got, I would say probably half and half, uh, and we've, we've tried to vet out the numbers the best we could, um, I shared them with you today, and now that it's finalized, and I think you're gonna have your consultants, the mechanical, electrical engineers review those, those items, so they can, you know, put their knowledge to the industry and, um, I guess give their input on the numbers.
Yeah, just to add a little comment, I mean, our normal process, as you may know, is when there's a proposal request issued, pricing comes back, it's part of our due diligence for, for our services queue, to look at those numbers, ask questions, make sure that there's backup information, it's just a series of checking balances, just like Matt, and his team looks at those things when the company subs, just another set of eyes, so, from the design perspective, we weren't, have the opportunity before, for example, mechanical were pretty significant numbers in this, and material cost for piping, and we want them to have eyes on that, and, you know, what they know about the market and material cost, provide some commentary, so, we'll, we'll, we'll channel those things through us as the architects, share it back with, with Matt and Shannon and Tracy and others, um, but we just need, we need some time to go through that process, for us to feel comfortable giving our recommendation one way or the other, um, from our standpoint as our. What do we have here, we have, of course, I mean, we were just in disagreement with, I mean, order, or, who's that? Contractually, I don't have a, for you, and that, yeah, my understanding is that's probably not, not really.
Yeah, and, you know, I don't, at this point in the game, you'd get much better pricing, you know, um, than contractually, it, you would essentially have to terminate the contractors that we got, and whether this, you know, in this market is just cost, terminate them, I think it would be a challenge.
We'd have to get into some pretty sticky legal, uh, tactics, I think, to do that, which will not help with time.
Any other questions before I start, rattling numbers off, or getting into numbers with a little more detail?
Yeah, I will, and I'll pull some of the rest of the board, so if you guys want to get the number, and if you were veteran, just send them on to me.
So the majority of these increases is strictly material increases, a lot of it is metals, um, some of this stuff, for example, the acoustic ceiling tile and grid, we've worked, trying to work with the contractor to find our home much real estate, you know, getting that material coming out of the waiting, and starting it on site, we came to a calculation of, um, I believe seven semi-trailers between two projects, that we would have the house on site here, which logistically is, uh, a nightmare, um, and the rental cost for those, those storage facilities for the duration of the project, I mean, kind of you chip away at it as the project moves along, but, so we've kind of, you know, vetted through most of this stuff, mechanical, electrical, um, again, like I said, I think it's important that the engineers take a look at it, they're more into what the markets are for those materials, um, so, Lyndon, for all the contractors we got cost for was a sum of $470,731. Of that, Peterson Mechanical, our mechanical contractor, had a total of $211,507. Um, they, along with a couple other contractors, did submit for labor increases, which we talked into them as a result of, um, the mandated labor union, um, increases that they have to give every year. There were two, uh, in Lyndon, that I did not include in that sum because I didn't There were two in Linden that I did not include in that sum because I didn't feel they were justified. One was the Charazin Contractor. He tried submitting a claim for $9,794 based on labor increases. And in talking with, through that process with him, he noted that at the beginning of 2022, he's gonna have a labor increase, that they'll be complete in this first phase, which is December 31st, 2021. So I didn't, the, the math doesn't add up, so. That one I did not include, but I did note it on this template with the number moving aside. Another one was Cullonnex, who supplied the kitchen and serving and meat dish room equipment. And all that is gonna be installed, with exception of the freezer, gonna be installed here this fall. And they wanted another $9,647 to keep the contract open for another year, which I don't think is justified, it'll be paid for the, for the equipment and installation, but they, I don't think it was justified for another $9,647, just the contract. So that one I did move aside and not include in the sum of $470.
For that kind of issue, I would feel like the design team can do a punch list on their items, provide them what they need to do to finish it, if there's mobile items. They can provide their own M manuals and they can do their training, so they're not in the way for the end product.
Dilworth's cost, again, was mostly all material increases. And the sum of that site was $222,927.65. There were no charges on this one that I, I did not feel were, that needed to be set aside. There is one kind of odd one in there, and that's from Berizi Iron Works, and that's our steel supplier. And from the time that we had approved our shop drawing process and scheduled our steel joists to be delivered on site, we had to kick them back a little bit. Cause everybody's seen the site over at Dilworth and it's extremely tight. And we had no record with those joists and they're set for an extended period of time. So they essentially threw some space rental charges at us, just because we needed that additional time to get the building up before we could put the joists to. And that was $6,861. And I, I don't know if anybody saw those joists being delivered, but they were full joists, they weren't split joists, so they came in a really large truck and had to be unloaded by crane, so. And we talked earlier about maybe moving them over here, but then we'd have to crane over here, reload them, unload them, put them on a specialized truck, and it just, it just if you made sense to hold that off. Any questions on Dilworth? Unfortunately, to project size, I think that they're, you know, Dilworth as a project as a whole, it's about half the size of the Linden project in, in dollars. Peterson Mechanical, which is the largest out of all of the contractors that have submitted claims, they're by far our largest contractor by dollar amount. So their number does seem high, but they, they do have the largest contract across the entire project, so.
The, with that information, and I don't know if you said it yet or not, but we went through it on our meeting earlier. You know, the same before, what we're gonna look for is backup information. The design team has to look for backup information from that subcontractor that explains, here's what they had, quantity in the original bid and what the price was, here's what the quantity is now and what that price is, so that those match up quantities, right? And then also an understanding of timing, so, you know, when was their number established initially, which should be with the bid time, but, you know, that was probably based off of certain assumptions of when they were going to be able to order. We need them to then show their work on, here's what that cost, or the timing was, I should say, for that cost when they did order and why, right? So we just had a face value, those are the basics that we're gonna look for for information, so. If the information's not there, doesn't necessarily mean it's right or wrong, but we're gonna ask for the information, so there, I guess, I'm just letting everybody know that that's a process, right? I'm sure Matt will do everything, he can get that information, but he's also has to have them respond, so.
And a lot of the contractors supplied quite a bit of backup information on it with pages and pages and pages of details of unit pricing from when it was originally bid out, unit pricing to what it is today, so.
You know, what I saw today, I don't have a chance to dive in in all detail, but just the volume of information provided is a lot, so, I mean, that's urging sometimes, not saying in this project, but just in general, sometimes you'll get things that's just a number of summary sheet, there's nothing there, so. So I guess that's a good sign for providing this volume of backup at this point, we just need to go through it and understand it.
Any other questions, does anybody? Can we all kind of do the cost for a unit higher, which is unfortunate, but hopefully we can. Everything to walk down, but, you know, I have to make some hard decisions on those, so.
Cost wise, I, you know, I wanted to share from JLD's perspective, like his impact for us, you know, there is for Comstock, if you're CM as well. I was sharing a little bit with Shannon before the meeting, kind of where we're at with it. It seemed like the, at least the starting point to look at was, well, you know, how much are we billing per month normally for our construction administration services? And how much longer are we doing it? And you multiply the two together and that comes up with a number. When I do that, that number's $190,000. But we haven't had a chance to really vet that out internally yet either, because there's a whole lot of factors that come into that. On the one side, you know, we, we felt that these are extensions of time that were beyond our control, since it had to do with state review timelines and things that we can't necessarily control. The flip side of that is, you know, that wasn't wasted time for us in terms of review and shop drawings, so it wasn't like we were just sitting there waiting for something to happen. We were reviewing shop drawings, as I mentioned earlier, we're largely through those already, so that's a significant amount of time for us as architects during this period of construction. So we're gonna wanna take that into account, so, you know, I had a chance to talk with Dan, who's our principal and studio leader, and, you know, our, our thought, we just wanna make sure you're aware of kind of what the worst case number is, but also let you know, we know it's not going to be that, it's gonna be something less than that. We need to be able to have a little more dialogue with our consultants. As you can imagine, it's not just us that, that has that extended time, it's also over now, it's MBN with civil, although their stuff's pretty much done, but, and then their structural. So we wanna make sure that they're also comfortable with what we're proposed to, so. So I'm sorry I don't have an answer on that today, but I wanna do something with where we're at with it, and we'll get that answer, what we're proposing in the next week, so that you have a chance to kind of absorb that as well.
So you're saying the 190 is a potential cost increase?
I'm just giving that as the worst, that would be the worst case scenario for additional design services for this project. But I'm also telling you it won't be that much, because we know it's gonna be something less than that. Maybe to give you a little context on that too, if I take a step back, so we have an overall fee that was based on percentage of construction, that's, it's established. And then the way we invoice that big total number over the life of the project gets broken down per phase, so there's a schematic phase, well, actually this one had a pre-reparative phase as well, but there's a schematic phase, which is early design, design development, which is the middle stage, there's the construction documents, it's the final stage of design, but then we also have a bidding period where we're helping with bidding to support that, and also construction. So we take that big number and we base it off of percent, a percentage of that big number goes to the, to each stage of design. The overall percentage for construction administration is 21% of our fee goes to that. Then that number gets broken up into time, so, you know, if it's a 18-month process, that, that total gets just divvied up evenly. That's, that's really the best way for us to do that. Now, that doesn't mean that's exactly what we're putting in every month, but it's the only rational way to, to break something up in terms of building. And it all totals, you know, the, the main total that we agreed on, but. And also to be clear, those percentages are in our contract, so that's all upfront, very clear about how that's all we can build on. But that's also based off of an understanding of when our services will end, and so now our services have to go longer because of this, so. I don't wanna over, over explain it, but I also wanna make sure you understand kind of the big picture context.
What are the district's options legality with regard to the contracts or increases? You basically pretty much have to pay them, whatever the molding or not.
So for the contractors, kind of like we discussed earlier, is you're essentially not obligated to pay this. It's, it's a claim that contractors are coming forth with, saying that they're, they're owed this money because of just cause. I, I would have reason to believe that if the district does, decides not to pay it, I, I haven't heard from any contractors that they're gonna pull off site to move the project, but I do have reason to believe that they would try to, you know, collect these in just different avenues. And that's, you know, I guess they're prerogative, but. They're essentially at this point approaching the district saying, you know, we've got material increases, this is why we feel we're owed this money, and putting it in school boards laughing, saying, is this justified or is it not?
When you review them, are there any, don't you bother to review them or not?
I can't say that I've tried negotiating with them on it. At this point, a lot of them, like I said, have quite a bit of substantial backup, that it's not necessarily my position at this point to negotiate it. If it's something that the school district wants to go through that process, I will absolutely help that process out and do what I can to help it, you know, become more of an understanding of the cost, if it's spelled unjos.
Legally, do they have the right cloud security agreement against us for not taking anything to?
Essentially, yeah, I think they do. Whether that holds water in court, I guess, I, I don't have the, that's not my decision to make.
I don't know if you're familiar with the term force majeure, legal term? You won't find it in, well, to my knowledge, it's not in your CM contract, I don't, I don't think that term's in there. They're not in the AI contracts, but there is language in AI contracts with contractors that essentially is the same point, which is if there is something that affects their ability to complete a project that's out of their control, they have contractual ability to try to claim those costs if it wasn't something that they could control. So, you know, in their, you know, I don't wanna speak for them, but I guess I'm just explaining to where they're coming from, which is this project didn't start when they expected, and so they weren't able to order things when they expected. And due to things out of their control, the prices of those same materials went up. And so they feel that there's, you know, there's, there's a reason for them to do that. And again, I'm not speaking for them, I'm just explaining where, where we see this. Typically, in most contractors, contracts, you'll find some provisions that allows for equitable adjustments where time changes, I assume the architects have that as well.
Right, yeah.
And, so I mean, you know, there are, there are for ethical adjustments, and that's what they're really dying to admit in here, so. And from our, from our perspective as architects, our role contractually in these arrangements is to be, excuse a general term, fair-minded and unbiased between the owner's rights in the contract as well as the contractor's rights, as well as our rights. We're meant, contractually set up to be something that's supposed to be unbiased. So back to the question about negotiating, if the contractors provide information that can clearly explain and is, you know, verifiable, that those costs were real and that they would be out something, it would be difficult for us to come in and say, well, eh, yeah, but don't you wanna take less for that, I mean, that, we can't really take that on that kind of role, because I'm sure you.
Right.
Probably don't want that from your architect or your special manager. They have to work. We're, we're all, we're all meant to be unbiased and fair in our roles as architects.
Yeah, and I, I mean, if there is some documentation that isn't justified and it's, there's a great area within it, then absolutely, and we should make, raise that question and make it provide the information.
Absolutely.
You know.
If we don't agree something, we will let them know about it.
Yeah.
And if they aren't able to satisfy that, I mean, you might still decide to do it, but we will continue to say we don't agree.
Yeah.
Because there are something I haven't heard back from, is that?
We've heard back from, and the last notification we sent them is we need an answer by this date or you're out of luck, essentially. And, and we've heard back from most everybody, there's maybe one or two, but the one or two are first phase contractors, like Aspen, maybe even they haven't heard back from, and there are first work contractors over at Dilworth. And I don't see any reason why they would come to the table with an additional increase because they'll be headed out of there this fall.
Sure, okay.
And so that one, I didn't put much of stake in banging on their door to try and get something decided from them.
I think what's important tonight was to have you hear some of this. We'll share all the documents, so you can share them, we have two weeks to ask more questions. I have some questions, I mean, we, we've been placed, so I get to post up at them too. I, anyway, so I think we have two weeks to kind of think through this, talk about it, have a GLG look through with their engineers, say, assess it, is this fair or is it not fair, even have the right documentation, so right there. Also, I heard Matt said there's about $18,000, he already said no too. And so that's what I think we need to do here in the next two weeks, is to get into it a little bit more and see where there is some opportunity for us to recover something, and then we're gonna have to make decisions.
And part of what the, the documents that I shared with you guys previously is Comstock portion of that, and, you know, we shared that back in April, when we were going through the whole rephasing. And, you know, like I talked about, we were sitting here in April, going through the rephasing, and we were brought up until, I think, August of 2021, but being it was, you know, a slow start, I think our reimbursals, what ours are called, is, carries us through December 31st. So ours essentially added eight months of construction, and essentially what ours are for the trailers, the supervision, the toilets, the portlets, the stuff that, you know, we all need to make these buildings happen, but they are reimbursals. And so at the end of the project, they need to read, portions of those reversible allowances that we don't use would be reimbursed to the district. And I think, you know, the priority right now, for me at least, is giving these contractors vetted out and, and gone through, and, you know, we can talk about Comstock for the later date, because they are essentially covered until the end of the year, so.
Well, I have some information for you guys on that, that we can talk about later.
And that one, yeah. I have the same question, Ronnie, so I kind of told Matt last Friday on, okay, what's this, what's that, what's he says, so he helps, and he came back with some answers, came back with some more information today. So kind of in my head, then I can kind of justify the numbers, or at least I'm not justifying necessarily, but understand, so that I can share with you guys tonight, kind of where we are with the whole project and where the big rooms.
So kind of in my head, then I can kind of justify the numbers, or at least I'm not justifying necessarily, but understand. So that I can share with you guys tonight, kind of where we are with the whole project and where the big room still is if it's needed.
You know, I, I would just share the, the comment or concern about contingency, right? And just to remind it for everybody, there's contingency that was set up, you know, to handle things that come up that are unforeseen. These are, you know, these are significant dollars, but I would be concerned about saying we're going to deplete all our contingency to cover that because we're not through the project yet. So we want to, it's still all your money, the district's money, but we also want to make sure we're not setting ourselves up to every time something comes out now, it's going to be a struggle for other things that still have to be resolved, so.
And that was one of the items we talked about on Friday.
Yeah, I just needed to find out what these numbers represented. And the other thing is the bid process was possibly significant, the significant lane under what was projected. So that gave us a little bit of one which is kind of getting beaten up here. But that's what we need to discuss, I think, as a group. And then I need you guys to know then, so we can hammer up questions that I get from them.
All right, just so you know, Matt, I did find that list.
Okay.
So back when we were going through comp stock estimating some of these additional sculpting that we could add using the dollars that were, you know, the, the savings or what have you, the positives from the bidding. You know, there was discussion at that time about things that still have to be accounted for in soft costs. So I brought those up just as, well, actually, if I take them back, some were soft costs, meaning not direct construction related, others are. So one was commissioning, you know, we have to have commissioning as part of this project. That's a requirement in state. That's an owner provided item, so we, you know, we'll provide an item for that. Soil correction, we had anticipated based on the, the geotech that there were going to be soil issues. Well, that proved to be true. There, there was, um, so I guess it's good that we planned for that. At that time, we knew about the, that Excel relocation for where it's still work. There was some dollars assigned to that. And then, um, there was just a target of, um, half a million that was kind of set aside from that two point six, value for just who knows what that might come up above and beyond the regular. So I guess I just wanted to remind the group of that discussion. We should probably get all of that just put together in the document. So that, that was, that was, that was from you guys, but.
Thank you guys for coming. Appreciate you guys coming. We'll see you again. All right, let's move on. Athletic report, bill of course.
I also submitted a claim to a harsh destruction project.
You guys mind if I just stick around? This is called the stand-up portion.
All right, I will be brief. Uh, August sixteenth and August thirtieth are dates, start dates for high school and middle school sports. Uh, we're going to plan on and August thirtieth for middle. Yep. And we're going to try to do, we weren't able to do one last year with a fall sports meeting. August tenth, seven o'clock, we'll have football, probably theater, volleyball in here and across country will be in Mr. Anderson's room. And we'll also try to, uh, the impact test, I got to look, make sure we've got a lab capable of helping our kids with fit. Bring the football players in especially with the volleyball. So we try to get them in and out that night. So we've got a baseline established for a trainer. Um, so we got to make sure we've got the space, otherwise we'll have to do it within those first couple of weeks of practice. Uh, first year, we're doing an online registration rather than pay for it, there's a thousand vendors out there. We just simply did approval form and you can sign up if you want to do it. Everyone's asking, how do I sign up? Well, you just show up and then you sign up. But this way you can see the days, they can sign up for everything, they can tell us how they want to pay. We can throw, we do the eligibility form on there, the risk waivers, we have to check the box to recover. Uh, and it basically eliminated a huge paper trail stack. So that was kind of nice. Uh, you can, you know, separate all your information by grades and, and sport and all this stuff, so we'll kind of have a run. It's not full proof yet, but I said it's the first year, so we're just kind of tweaking it as we want so far. So good, I'm good. Uh, right now I'm just looking for a couple of middle school volleyball coaches. I've got some interest, so I plan on having that wrapped up this week. And all the fall schedules are posted. We did have the basketball and the wrestling and things like that, but all the fall are posted separate, seventh and eighth and ninth grade volleyball. We don't do those schedules yet with the FM league and then with the ninth grade. Conference schedule, get those, that ninth grade teams in itself. Be patient on that, but hopefully soon that'll be up there. Last thing, uh, the M E C looking into this, I think it would be time to meet. I think we can meet, uh, a lot of our kids that maybe don't participate. The M E C is the Minnesota Esports Club. So basically it's gaining competition. So you've got schools versus schools with Madden and NBA two K and there's team events, there's single events. And, and you look at our student body, you know, it ties into STEM and all, you know, all according to the brochure, whatever. And I mean, I believe everything I read, so it's definitely good, right? It was, it actually started when Zed and his kids in up until nineteen started and it's kind of grown. And so it's one of those where make some calls, kind of see, I know, um, areas schools are looking at. It's the biggest school closest to us is probably the Ridge. Uh, there's vendors on that say, hey, we'll coach and do everything, but you're likely to check. Some of these schools have people in-house that, hey, after school, we invest in a couple councils. I mean, I admitted we've got TVs in the room already, but you need a gaming chair, you just need, you know, whatever it is. Um, yeah, and you play and then you can compete online, you don't have to travel. And it might be something that just kind of, you know, for, they tie it into a lot of, you know, computer programming and STEM stuff like that. So it might be something down the road that maybe kind of fits a niche of some of our kids that aren't too many on the athletic side, but are into that gaming side. So I'll do some digging on that. It's not something that happens tomorrow, it's something, um, I'd like to look and do and we'll see. Yeah, I mean, it might be, and you can be on teams too, so you can go and.
I mean, if you'd like to get involved and fix them together and get social awareness.
Own D P S shirts.
There are a lot of kids that like it. No, I, I like it.
One other opportunity for kids.
Yeah. Like, it brings more information.
Tracy, six point three summer record scores.
Well, I shared this this afternoon or whatever, and I hope you have a copy, but, um, overall this week we're wrapping up, um, most of our summer rec activities. Um, we have football camp that will go the first week of August. Um, but, um, other than that, we're kind of going the whole summer this year, so it's, uh, kind of nice. Overall, um, what we try to do more this year than anything is trying to obviously get away from a lot of the paperwork stuff. Um, everything that we do is pretty much online. Our schedules, did we cancel anything? Coaches go to our website, look at that, anything that's delayed, um, it's been, um, really helpful. Um, this year we also built in, if we had any rain days, we built in a couple of rain day activities that were outside. So that in the event we needed to do that, we put. Um, the other thing that, uh, we added to our website is the prayer league. Um, for many of you, I don't know if you're familiar, but we're in the prayer league, Barnesville, Law League, um, Pelican. All of us participate in the, in that league, fourteen U, eighteen U, um, Ponytail, Little League, um, all of those. So that league, we actually kind of buried that on our community ed page because I do schedules for all the, for our league, so that instead of us even meeting on, you know, a couple of times a year to get that information out. If I have cancellation for the whole league, I can go right to the prayer league webpage on our page and cancel it for every town that we've been called. So it's, uh, just been a lot more efficient. Um, transportation this summer, we have, you know, partnered obviously with summer school, so we'll share, uh, we'll share some of that expense. So we built our, um, summer rec, some, uh, shuttle schedules around summer school too, so that we can utilize both and we kind of shared the costs that way. So it met all the, the site's needs. Uh, instructors and coaches, we couldn't give them a big enough shout out. Um, we have probably over fifty, sixty coaches that volunteer for us, um, in T-ball and Coach Pitch. Um, it's just amazing to see the volunteers that we get, so a big kudos to them. Um, as you go down and you look at some of the classes, a lot of them we have done each year. Um, one of the ones we like to start off every year with is what do I do coming home? Um, we work with Jeff Lee and the whole of help, um, in, instruct our kids what to do in the event stranger danger and, um, there's a fire or anything like that. So we started that off, um, and with COVID, we ran through that, you know, right, the school got out of the main. Um, T-ball and Coach Pitch this year, we did a little different. We used to do those Mondays and Wednesday nights. Now, just because of, we didn't want to hold volume of kids together in one space, you know, just the teams of fifteen, eighteen kids. We literally put our registration this year to say, parents, do you want to do Monday, Wednesday, or Tuesday, Thursday? So they had a nice option to pick what worked for them and it made it so smooth. We would definitely do it again next year just because you probably have five teams, one night for the other. So it, it worked really well. Um, and we even started a little earlier. Um, we usually start at five thirty, this year we started at five, five to six, six to seven. And then we were done with the fields so that then baseball programs could use the fields when we worked on them. So it, it worked really well. Um, Ponytail, um, Little League, the one thing I was looking at a little bit lately has been our Little League numbers. Um, if you look at our Little League numbers, third and fourth, that's just our P B N O. We had twenty kids, we did field two teams. Um, some days, you know, you have eight or nine players, but we made it work. Um, fifth and sixth, we had four teams, which was one team. If you remember, uh, I'm going to go back, I'm going to visit a little bit with the baseball club, um, and the athletic, um, athletic club. And looking at the numbers, um, two thousand seventeen, this year we had twenty kids. In two thousand seventeen, we had fifty-three. Two thousand eighteen, we had forty-one. Two thousand nineteen, we had thirty-six. So we are at half or almost less. Um, fifth and sixth grade, we had fourteen, we had enough to field one team. In two thousand seventeen, we had thirty-three. Twenty-six in two thousand eighteen, thirty-nine in two thousand nineteen, now we're down to fourteen. So we also know that in two thousand nineteen, we changed our policy on field use, so we don't charge for that for our district club. So just to see, are we encouraging our players in Ponytail and Little League or Ninety, any of them going to also play community ed? If, you know, it's just kind of a good partnership. Um, but we know how competitive things are. I mean, I'll say, oh, man, softball, I mean, you want your kids to play from little on up and be competitive, you know, it just depends on the parent. So overall, we're just fortunate that we're still fielding teams, but we also know kids can't be so overcommitted that they can't do community ed during the day and all the other teams at night. So there has to be a balance and that's a parent's choice. But overall, we're watching the numbers and we'll continue to, to see for Ponytail and Little League. Um, fourteen U, eighteen U, we did again, play football. We moved from the night to the day. We went from about twenty kids last year, or two years ago, we didn't have much last year, to this year we had eighty-seven because we offered it during the day. So a great, great add. Many, our soccer, we had, you know, K two, usually we do K two, three and four. Three and four is just kind of that soccer. Because we don't have it really in the school, kind of one where they're dying, it's almost dying on the vine, third or sixth. So, um, we didn't offer that, but we have increased numbers K through two. We continue on down the list. We added the volleyball league this year. Um, we had worked with Mike Anderson and offered a track and field camp for fifth and sixth graders. Um, we continued on the next column, offered a lot of art classes. Um, we did add a couple, uh, three things this year. Last year we did the sky zone. This year we did fun in the sun games to go where we had them out in the, the field and we had thirty kids sign up and we had a hundred and forty-nine show up. So it was families and it was awesome and we will definitely do it again. We added Thunder Road, which a lot of kids love, and Wednesday night we have our three on three. So it was a great summer, busy, busy, over fifteen hundred registrations and, like, almost seven hundred and eighty kids that registered. So it's almost like back to pre-COVID for us. I mean, it was busy. And now we'll end on, um, Thursday, we'll send out a, uh, in our district weekly communication holding, so the parents can go out there, do the survey and say, tell us what activities you participated in, what could we have done better? What went well, um, and any tweaks or suggestions that they have. So busy year, but a great year, great year, better than twenty twenty summer. Any questions for me?
Thanks for all the offerings. That's awesome.
Questions, let me know.
All right, six point four, both committee reports. Um, so we, uh, David sent over an email, wrote F and P last week.
Yeah, is there a recap? Okay, good.
He just wanted to give a recap, do you have a recap? He's fancy here. So David volunteered to be, um, uh, fiscal personnel's, um, chair and we're in a world where he's in a tactical separation of these committees.
Yeah, so we talked about, um, chair and that, that ball and bolt for that.
What do you want?
Um, we talked about separated working and particularly fiscal personnel. The one thing that we did bring up is, you know, there is some overlap between fiscal and personnel. When you think about budget, fiscal, class budget, um, and personnel, particularly with negotiations. So, uh, it makes, I think we all felt like it makes a lot of sense. Transportation contracts, I think particularly in fiscal personnel, weren't sure whether or not where that should fall. That's something we discussed, but that was, that was one thing I did put in before. Shannon did meet with that N F C A agreement president, I mean, he probably updated us on that. Talked about moving kid foster regarding middle school position. Um, we had, we had an issue with Pope on account of being within, essentially within school funds. And so steps were taken to get that removed and that's, that's probably safe for the email. Uh, Shannon just gave an update on a legis, legislature for fiscal year twenty-two moving for fiscal year twenty-three. And the percentage increase is our two point four five to two point zero percent, which is better than normal, uh, worth noting. There, Ken worked with grading marks to figure out the other pieces of revenue, because that's obviously our hardest to come. Uh, and Ken just gave an update on the business manager position.
And just to kind of piggyback on like splitting committees, um, the personnel, uh, there was four people listed, myself, David, Laura and Amy. Um, so we scratched Amy from that because she's already on policy facilities. Um, and then she'll be in personnel and it's just too much and obviously we can't do the form on committee. So, um, budget will be David, myself, Ronnie, and then personnel will be myself, um, David and Laura. So I mean, the policy and facilities stays the same. And then other than that, can you call you work, um, did you give the packet, packet from work last time? So yeah, it's in there, so you'll see those, um, things. So again, um, anybody has any questions or you want to have a discussion about all of this right now, we certainly can do so.
If you just have a common conclusion whether the council, the coaches that have the knowledge of the committee or if you want to go with the others.
Right, and tonight we gave operations, this is still operations and operations used to be operations. Right, and tonight we gave operations, this is still operations, and operations used to be operations in, in transportation. So as part of tonight's meeting, I'd like to ask that group if that's where we want transportation, because that's where it was before. And that was the only thing I thought about is facilities and transportation maybe could go together. Um I don't know. So I want to talk to that group tonight, and I think Ronnie's right, we didn't really know for sure how that should.
So hopefully, yeah, so hopefully after tonight's meeting with operations, you guys can have these conversations and then maybe we can, uh where we've been at the meeting in August, if we're starting to get that approved, then we can go to this one, so.
Kind of thinking maybe not far, we've got a future here.
I, I think that's something that we want to discuss as a board. That was kind of part of my report, I think, to ask, what do you guys feel for time? Would we wait for the reorganization, like Ronnie's saying in January? Or is it something, we're kind of putting a meeting times in place right now as far as names, it's kind of some of that logistical stuff. But I'm open to what you guys are gonna do with that, uh, with the board.
Will we talk about their reports? Um is there any other board committee reports? Have you guys got anything else? Okay, let's move on to the superintendent reports. So Shannon's got eight who are here and what did she have for?
Awesome. Uh construction update, that is fair enough. Uh all I'll say is, is I'm making a commitment, um, to be in blended once a week, along with the principals of Travis. We have a punch list that was created, Tr- uh Tracy and I brought that last week. I said the punch list is gonna be a part of our F O A C meeting every week. I don't want anything to be missed and I don't want to say Lee or Matt, oh shoot, I forgot. So it's already added to their agenda every Thursday. Tracy and I are gonna update it before that meeting every week. And I'll have a chance to watch the both sites. If there's anything that comes up, I'm gonna go on the punch list, talk about that Thursday, we'll move the next week. A lot of what we had on the punch list was knocked out, which was nice. Uh found out that they hadn't looked at it for weeks. So it was important that we got that, it worked out well. But today's walk was, was nice with Travis and then that's gonna be a regular schedule for them. First center, uh we stopped it, I think I shared this a little bit with you guys before, maybe we're gonna have fifteen tips that go there this fall. Uh fifteen, so that's important. I think this is important for me to share with you. They're gonna be our G D digs, if you will, and fifteen I can work with. Katie was super happy that was the number because as Morehead's learning and figuring this thing out, we're also learning and transporting what it's gonna look like. This first semester, uh we're not gonna have this impact of seventy-five, a hundred kids. So we stopped it when the dates were, people might complain, oh, the goalkeeper's gonna get in, you know what, in the spring again. And you might be happy that you're going in the spring and not fall, because we have a lot of logistics to figure out yet. Uh last week's meeting was canceled because they have a bunch of people, actually we did too, because this was John Dickerson was gonna join us. So we meet Wednesday. And so you guys said, I want, I told him again, I got some more members who want to sit down. So this Wednesday, we're gonna meet with the tech people and that to make sure that those student systems talk to each other. The tech people are pretty positive that they've already worked through that. We're gonna kind of finalize some of that stuff on Wednesday at noon. And then I'm hoping that we can say, okay, now, more members, I think we have kind of a behind the scenes kind of junk that you'll need to listen to. Kind of taken care of, and so now you guys can come in and then ask some of your questions too, and I think we're gonna be okay. Uh when it was fifteen, my original response was, really? And then the more we talked about it, I went, you know what, that might be perfect, especially this first little sample that we're gonna sample.
So we didn't have to, like, we didn't cut anybody off.
No, no, we got. And we, they, they did reopen it, I think, and so, I don't know, was it July, end of July, maybe? No, we're still in July, I'm sorry.
No, it was right after the Fourth of July, and it was open for two weeks and I think.
Fourteenth, I'm, I'm sorry. Yeah, okay, July fourteenth, yeah. So we opened it again and, and at that, on that day, I just told them, we're done. Let's just stop, because we're gonna keep doing this until when? Stop. Let's make sure this thing works and not affect so many people. And oh, hey, this really worked out well. Now with seventy-five, here's all we can do. Or with a hundred, here's what we can do. I think it's always good to take that sample size and learn from it. Morehead was happy too, because they don't know for sure how they're managing their people every, I mean, it's the first time we're rolling out the carpet, so we want to make it all the way down the line.
Two summer law, the kids are back to having classes, having four, shop, have fours over there.
Well, so that was discussed, Ronnie, right? So we have two semesters, so second semester, those that need it, we can make sure that they get over there. So it wouldn't be a whole year without it. It would be a semester where we can still make sure that's available. Yep, no, it's one of the first things I talked about.
Shannon, do you know how many more kids you're going to be for your study?
Well, it's gonna be, instead of going to shop in Morehead High, there's no shop in Morehead High anymore, all over there. So everybody that signed up for shop in Morehead is going over there. Everybody that signed up for fax is going over there, because they don't have a site forum at our high school right now. But they're traveling every hour, they're bringing a whole of kids back and forth, they're going non-stop every hour. Not every hour, I'm sorry, they're on walks. So every walk, they'll be transporting kids. Because, except we just eliminated it from our high school, so you gotta go over there and take that class. Um both have reassured us again, whatever number of kids you have, they're gonna fit in here. We're gonna make sure this thing works. So if a hundred kids, we'll figure it out. So I feel fairly confident in that, I really do. I, I like the way they're talking, I like the the conversation was very positive and, uh, hang on, I'll just leave that out. So we're kind of hammering up some logistics still. Um I'm gonna talk about last time, it just happened one more, we're gonna work on that, and I haven't had a chance to sit down, uh, and work on that. So, uh, referral property. So this is part of the operations meeting tonight too. I want to get more into the weeds of that situation. I have visited Dan personally on the phone, he's the mentor right now. I have given him a notice to be out by the end of August. Uh he's struggling right now to find something. I said, well, I have some things that I gotta talk with the board yet too. I said, after tonight's operations meeting, I'll probably have work for him. Um but I wanted to make sure I got that ball rolling. So as they talk about extra money, and we could be sparking on last or not, give something we can do with shifting semester two and three money around, I think it is. I did talk to the city. Of course, there's ordinances and paving and striding and a wall of fence of some sort, which is additional cost and a gravel parking lot. So we have to work through some logistics on that too, but I needed the thing to get started. I know we've talked about it a lot, I wanted that to start. Dan understands our timeline, he gets what we want to do. He's just kind of this, right, he's a renter and he's trying to figure out how else to, a place to live, totally get it. So we had a good conversation today, uh, but more to come on that, I guess. We had a grant meeting with the county, Tracy and I met with them last Friday, uh, and I wrote it down somewhere. It is called Positive Community, Community Norms Grant. And basically what it is, it's a five-year grant that are hiring a person at the county who will be in our building full-time, working and, and communicating with kids about bathing and alcohol. You'll have an office here, there's a big, they'll be coming. Tracy, I'm gonna call you. Was it Florence? They've done it. Morehead, more, it's been a little slower to react, he said it just couldn't figure, I get that. But just excited about what he had to share again, if they're gonna hire to take that position. I think it fits with the, so again, I'm working with you guys and the goal.
I was just, uh, always, um, when I worked with the college school leadership, we have a program, and it was so, and you know, it's their program right here.
Yep.
For the four teenagers that are two and twelve. And it was a different program, and it's done a lot of kids, involved in some positive things. And really achieved the perspective, uh, how many kids are doing some of those activities.
Yeah, you shared some numbers, I just was really, and I thought, you know what, anytime I hear grant, I go, sweetest story.
When you drive out, if you graduate from a police series, then you can see several, um, billboards that fit that kind of positive community norms. Um our kids don't do that, this, this is a new kids, and you'll start recognizing a few of those things that are popping up from some of those different, um, communities that are.
And is this different than the grant that the wellness committee was talking about before?
It is, it ties to that though. So she talked about that and she said, we're not gonna, because they have another program that's almost a mirror of that. And uh so they said, we're not gonna mess with that because I met with Margot and Mary Ann about that. That is still going, they just haven't talked about it. Uh they're gonna reuse some of those Wednesdays, the late starts. Uh so there was a good conversation with those two ladies. And then it would tie into this thing too. So we kind of have a support from different areas and it really might help us kind of lay them up, so. Yeah. Uh and meeting the guy, he just kind of reassured me that wherever we're going, it's gonna be a good one, so. It is. Yeah, so. That was the first time I met him, when he seemed sharper than he seemed on it.
Yes, including for all of the schools.
Okay, okay. Yeah, so, yeah, I think it's, it's gonna be a good, a good thing. Uh Van Choir Trip, Wayne, uh is meeting with the Van Choir people Wednesday, uh following our, um, career academy meeting. Cause I put on some things, uh, to them that I needed to see before we could say, you take the go. Uh and they took that challenge and they're working on it. And I'm gonna be with Wayne on Wednesday to give us a little update. I know they did work. I'm living over there, they did some things there. I said, go ahead and do it, uh, because then we can talk about what you're planning to do. I, my deal is always, it's gotta be educational and has to be full of education. I, I challenged them to hook up with high schools down there, Singapore's high schools, and I think somebody else brought some of that too. We, I don't remember who, but somebody did, and I just love that concept. And so I threw that at those guys and they said, yeah, sounds good, they'll put something up. More to come on that. Um negotiations, so there are a lot of that, it's gonna be great enough. I want you guys to know that I am meeting tomorrow with, uh, with three of the bus contractors, uh, to discuss, uh, moving forward. We do have a contractor that is, uh, looking to sell to one of the other contractors. We'll talk more about that tonight in transporta- or in operations too. Uh so the other three, I want to visit with them individually tomorrow, just to make sure each one gets a chance to voice with me how they feel. And then we're gonna bring them all together and have a discussion so we can get this thing over. Okay? Um the other ones, I'll just, we'll get to those next too. I just want to let you know that, hey, I know that we still have to do this. Everybody's excited about. Um and then the committees, that's something Lindsay already brought up. And I guess that's what we can talk about more tonight after this operations decided to want transportation, to be a part of that or not. Seth, I, I must be listening.
No, Ronnie wants you to add I's.
Oh, I, yeah, oh, I'm sorry, yeah, for sure.
So Brooke at the bottom, when you get the paper, then always put a question on that. Thank you.
Um I guess that's it for now, like, one for a while, but I gotta stop. Uh updates, I hope that went well. Everybody saw my update on Friday, I'll send that out every Friday.
Have you had one question? Um after, at your first construction update, they were talking about the dimensional issues. That seemed like that was kind of a big deal, who pays for that, let's see, because they were supposed to have verified it, and they took the third block through when they were doing some verification.
So, so, yep, so as discussed when they were here, they have some numbers that they're sharing with us. I want us to take two weeks to kind of go through those, that being something that I'm still not super happy with. I still have to communicate with the state, uh, about the permit timeline. That's been, it's in the back of my head. I don't have an answer yet. I haven't had a chance to reach out to the state, but I think there's some skin to game over there and I want to then bring that back up. You know, a spark, you know what I mean by that? I mean that there was, uh, J O T have the, have the, or have the documents for a period of time, a long, before they resubmit it. And then the state had it for a period of time, right? You guys know this, it went on and on. And then the state reissued that, if there were mistakes, guess what? We can't do anything yet, gotta fix those, send it back again. So I want to know the timeline of our, I should say, how long did the state have it? How long did you have it? Well, there's a month, okay, there's twenty-five grand, take that off. That kind of approach. I, we gotta dig into these numbers.
I just didn't know if the dimensional one, it sounded like you just kind of maybe had already talked about that. And I thought, um, cause he said, you know, you were supposed to see a walkthrough and then verify, blah, blah, blah. So that was that part, I'm assuming, because he kept talking about dollar signs, that that was the big ones, steel was part of that. And that to me seemed like a very large portion of our books.
I think it's kind of steel, I mean, it's not. Well, there's two things, huh? When they found out that it was a mistake, just like, I don't know if it was matter we said, the steel was already coming. While oops, you can't redo the steel when we're basically have it, so now they have to make an adjustment because they're five feet off, they're fourteen inches off.
What do you say about cutting the steel off? So we're getting a lot of money to cut off and throw in the trash.
One of them did have some of that that wasn't that big of an impact, one didn't say has a bigger impact. So that number, this is what I, I'm in the game now a little bit, so now I was learning this stuff. It's something that we, for sure, like Ronnie said, well, that doesn't add up to us, right? So what do we do? Do we take them to court? Do we? I want to work with them to see if we can't some.
That's why I didn't ask in front of them, I wanted to weigh in on that. I didn't want to be confrontational, but I.
The only C meetings are the places where I think we need to get into that. And, and that's on Thursdays and that's in the up check.
I figured you had it all taken care of, and that was your position and mine, so. I said, I figured that you had already had that in your mind, so I said, that figured, that's why it was your position and mine, and I should have.
Well, no, it was fine, I'm glad you asked, I'm glad, I'm glad you all asked the questions you asked, because you need answers. And it's perfect, because then I get to see an answer. Because I have a lot of questions and.
Are you, do you want to hold on those, or do you want me to?
Yeah, no, I do want to stick a note, we'll send it away, away in the morning, okay?
I, I didn't want to send with everything, and I was just like, I, you divided out with them before, because I can't answer your questions when you're talking to both sides.
Yep. And so Lindsay saw my responses back to that. I asked her a lot of questions for some clarification on numbers. Um and I, okay, so this is starting to add up, I was, okay, I can get a telling note that means, because I came in at the middle of this, and so what they're showing on the document was I had to take the base assumptions that weren't right. As Matt pointed out, and then I said, okay, well, that makes me feel better, because what I was wrong about actually was a benefit. And so that's gotten nervous when I found it.
I think we, and I've been the same thing, because we weren't part of the whole process all the way through, so I think some of it's not, and.
Yep, yep, you, yeah, I understand. So we will, I will share it out, we'll be out tomorrow, you can look at all this. Don't have my architect, it gives us time to look through it, because it may be paused. As Lindsay, when I started asking questions right now, it's okay.
Question on the conventional, is why didn't they go down through each?
It's one of my issues for sure, Ronnie, it just doesn't make sense. I agree. It's a, this project, like all, both by million-dollar public projects. Yes, because of how contracts are written and how they're bid and it's, and.
Uh eight, okay, since that meeting committees, was there?
No, that was, that was just about this.
Okay.
That you already talked about, so unless there's more, yeah.
No, 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 no. So the plan is you guys will discuss tonight, and then next week, we will have discussions on committees and make sure that we're comfortable with these. And if we wanted to wait, we wanted to move, um, wait till January, we wanted to move now. I think if we're at a chance down here and here, I think that we should consider taking this change sooner rather than January. You get going on this stuff, so.
One thing I should point out on this handy dandy, beautiful, really, really, uh, hey, you'll notice doing a July art on there. Um, you noticed that or not? Um and so full disclosure, uh, Brooke and I did talk about it today and how we want that to look in the future as to that day. Those committees get a break in the summer, obviously this summer, we wanna take a break, because we're just getting this thing going. Uh but if they need to meet, or we'll just set up a meeting July on there, and that's what Brooke said she'll do, she'll create the new calendar. Get it on there once we make the decision on whether or not it's gonna start now or we're gonna wait till January, you know, so, anyway.
So you guys have your discussion, we'll all discuss it next time, and we plan. So, all right. Seven point one, this is a typical regular board meeting on July twelfth, we have a motion to approve. Motion by Amy, is there a second? Second by Laura, all of us in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion in here. Uh consent agenda, or are claims and accounts?
Three hundred and eighty thousand dollars, I'm sorry, three hundred and eighty, nine hundred and thirty-one dollars. Three thousand dollars, I'm sorry. Three eighty, nine thirty-one, thirty-three cents.
Also in that packet is treasurer's report, and it's a little bit asset of mass town activities report. Um use also resignation, uh, Kelly Nelson, his school teacher effective the end of twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year. Resignation of Sarah Sett, her professional ended school year, and Ashley Finjan, her professional effective July twenty-first. Also included in the packet is the actual circular, um, fortune list as presented. We have a motion to approve. Motion by David, is there a second? Second by Amy, uh, any discussion?
I have two questions for the, for Shannon, we need to answer those. I need to let that one more prepare for something.
So, uh, Bill, there is, uh, Mike, oh, I don't think, oh, I don't think I understand that, right? I did visit with him today. This was a bill from all last year. So I had conversations with him about, uh, LPFM funding and bonding and all that. I spent some time with him today, and I spent one hour and a half with the statements today, also voter LPFM, which is coming up a little bit. So that was my understanding of last year's bill for his support on primarily the LPFM, the bonding and the building project.
Second one, if I had nothing to share about, we was handling with that solar garden, saying he broke answer that for me. Thanks for the B major solar gardens and the one for the XL. Supposed to be a difference and they're supposed to be cheaper, but I was kind of confused how it was supposed to be working, so.
When you look at a thirteen thousand dollar bill, eleven thousand cheaper, but yeah, I guess it's, it's.
Okay. All righty then, so a motion on the second. Any other discussion or questions? All those in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Uh, new unfinished business, something to contract. This is for Candy Morgan, a ASL interpreter. Um, thirty-two dollar number effective, started the 21, 22 school year. Your motion approved. Motion by the opposed, there's a second.
Second.
Second by Brittany. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Nine point two, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two fees. This are included in your packet. Packet reminder that this is the second reading of this. Um, we went over it last time. Just to keep you up to speed and full, um, we were looking, we are increasing our, um, activities. They were going for, Joe jumped in please, because I don't know if I have it from last time. He went up five dollars or ten dollars? Where is it? Oh, there it is. All right, that's my, um, that was cheap. Here, I was gonna like, Joe, off the top of your head. So we're going from a five dollar increase in seventh and eighth grade activities from forty-five to fifty and nine to twelve, sixty-five to seventy-five. And at the individual staff will adjust by five dollars and the family cap rate one. Um, as far as the breakfast and lunch, uh, elementary and middle school lunches, everything's free, but, um, second entries. That price is set by the federal government. Um, any other?
Well, the only other thing I wanted to say is last week, or last week, last week we talked about this update. And I was, so I sent you a email like saying to Candy, somewhere in the last two weeks, anyway, they just moved the line thirty and sixty-five. So that is reflected on here, so.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Um, any other questions or concerns with local inquiries?
We have somebody asked the kind of, we started with the free meals, like a letter on the E P D, like we need to treat or whatever. That basically was the free reason for the, that Alex, we didn't run it. Um, some kind of letter went on or something to the parents.
Yeah, so that's still, we still need to get the free readers stuff. Here's the issue that's, this is a long, I'm gonna keep it really short, but our problem is with every school district right now, because they're offering the free meals, there's so many people, they're not filling up that paperwork anymore, right? So we're signing out because we still need you to do it because that is tied to intensive doors, a lot of other funding streams from the state. That are tied to free readers lunch. And it's kind of kicking everybody's butt right now, I mean, as far as school districts, so we did get sent out because we still wanted to do it.
I hope you still have it, so we need that to be an extra money.
You're right on, Ronnie. That's exactly what it is, so.
Everybody watching, fill out your sheets, please. Thank you. If you need a sheet, call me at our offices. We'll happy to direct. Okay, so the motion to approve. Motion by Amy, is there a second? Second by David. Any more discussion or questions or concerns? All those in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carries. All right, policies. This is our second reading on nine point, uh, nine weekly policies. Second reading on five oh nine point one, old state tuition and the five oh nine point two, normal lottery process. We have a motion. Motion by David, uh, is that Paul, you want a second?
Yeah.
All right, any further questions or discussion on those two policies? All right. Yeah, it was a formulator.
Uh, I'm, I'm just looking through about sixty-eight, something, yeah, yeah.
That's funny.
Yeah, yeah, right there, that one. Okay, sixty-seven.
All right. We have a, um, we have a motion by David, a second by Paul. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Nine point four. Um, this is to improve the vehicle bits for the twenty, two thousand and seven Chevy Suburban and two thousand and nine Ford F-15 pickup. I honestly, I don't, I've seen this, operations, yes, I've heard.
You know, so this is what this is. This is for you guys, so we can put those up for bits if somebody wants.
Oh, oh, oh.
We have two vehicles that I found out that are sitting out here for a year.
Yep.
I said, well, let's put them on the bit. And so that's what we need. You guys have to approve that we can put those up for sale, so hopefully up for bit. Uh, I've already talked to the insurance agent because I said, we're not gonna pay the insurance, so we gotta get some credit back. Sounds like we're gonna get six months' credit back because of the savings to another. And so now hopefully somebody will come forward like Ronnie and say, that's a great paint truck. I've got a new motor in my car. But anyway, so we'll open up for bit and what we get is better than what we have as a young, it's a parking lot, word of it.
Okay.
So.
I like it. All right, creation. Oh, motion by Nicole, is there a second? Second by Laura. Any other questions or discussion on that? All those in favor say aye. All right, ten point one, contract. Um, additional action items here, this is for Dick Bossler, teacher V eight plus thirty, step eighteen, effectively started this one born twenty-three school year. Could be done on. Motion by Nicole, is there a second? Second by Brittany. Let's have some thank yous to Shannon and Mr. Bossler for watching. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Um. He better be able to mentor another.
Joe, I had that conversation with Belly City State last Thursday, Wednesday, Thursday. Joe closed the deal. I missed that. I said, I'm mad.
I am.
Me either, or I am very excited.
Well, I am very, very, very excited, yeah. I, I don't know, I think you think of Mr. Bossler, how many times he failed us.
It's a full year contract. He will be here for the full year. He's gonna teach. Uh, obviously to start the school year, if we work this out, then this student teacher will come for spring semester. So that person will spend the spring with him. Hopefully everything goes well. We can offer that young man an opportunity to stay on with us. Uh, I know Kim and I are gonna have more discussions moving forward into the future, which is gonna be something I want to talk about tonight with the operations group. Because I have some other little thoughts coming in, like, that for Mr. Bossler.
Sounds wonderful. Thank you, thank you. All right. Then, uh, Nicole and Brittany, second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Certified contract for Elizabeth, don't, nobody's, don't, I'm so sorry. Goodness, thank you. Uh, this, uh, parent professional was started at the twenty-one, twenty-three school year. You have a motion to approve. Motion by Nicole, is there a second?
Second.
Second by David. Uh, any questions or discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Ten point three, this is certified contract for Ashley Evans. This is middle school avid, remains step two. Effective the start of the twenty-one, twenty-three school year. Is there a motion? Motion by Laura, is there a second? Second by Ronnie. We are remaining question to discussion. All right, any questions or discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Ten point four, this is a long-term facility maintenance, uh, resolution. Um, we are gonna get a motion and a second. I'm gonna have any read, no, the law, call, is there a motion?
Mm-hmm.
Motion by David, is there a second? Second by Nicole. All right. Any resolution, plan is all. For a regularly scheduled, we have a spring board of eight minutes, or twenty-one, or there's not like, yeah, basically it's like their employee at six P M on July twenty-sixth, twenty-second. Whereas, so you can miss all the statutes, like the one twenty-three, eighty-five, ninety-five. All public school are required annually to have their just one chance to celebrate and their primary. If it involves trying to be a student for their education. Be resolved, and the school board of three minutes, two, and twenty-one, sixty-four. Still reforming some of those problems. The board, their rights, the rights of the one free facility, they have a new plan. The church authorized and directed to copy that application to the institute for an education. As soon as we have been given, act, no, after adoption of the college. In no event will there be five, thirty, thirty-one. The motion to be gotten, the location of due residence by, 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 on a local vote, probably members, won't be. All right, we're gonna answer all questions. Um, and let Shannon present the manual you were a local vote.
Um, so you guys, the documents you did get them, right? So we have a revenue and we have an expenditures. And so this, this district is extremely unique, as I found out over the last week, and more specifically today. You guys have bonds out there from previous air quality things. You have now bonded your LPFM money for this building project. You already get funds under LPFM, under your formula. And to try to make sense of this document, it took me a little time. Uh, so I brought in a partner, so folks had me today for an hour and a half with the state lady, thank you, Brooke. Um, Sarah Miller from the state also had a difficult time with this document for quite some time, trying to understand the result. This is now up to date with our numbers. This is a document that is fluid and we all know we're fluid now. That means we can make adjustments to it. This is all preliminary. This is, uh, projection. So if you look at the revenue, which is your legal, this is a revenue projection. You're gonna notice, and I'll just take it to line twelve, so if you go to the left-hand side, the debt service for existing, uh, facilities and whatnot, H, uh, health and safety bonds. You'll notice in twenty twenty-two, that number is eighty-five thousand, eight ninety, and the next year it's over a million. So this is where that bonded money starts to get thrown into this. That's the holder approved funding. So you're going, what happened there? That's what happened there. So then it's reflective in there. One of our bonds will mature in twenty twenty-five. Uh, that's the one for, uh, when Randy Tour was here, he did an HVAC update or some things down there. That'll mature down in twenty twenty-five. Uh, Marcus and I went through that last week when he was here to make sure that's in the right place. Now you bonded money till twenty thirty-nine on this project, on this building project. Which I found out the numbers today and it is, it's about eighty percent of your money. But talking with Mike today, Mike helped Ryan figure this all out, been visiting with him today. Uh, we're gonna have about a hundred thousand still every year, so we're gonna give six, if you look in here in the revenue, it's six seventy-four. So if you look at line ten, initial revenue, so that's six seventy-four, six eighty-nine, you can see that number. That's what the state's giving us based on the people units we gave them. Very conservative number, I'm not gonna say conservative, our, it's actually higher. Age of building is gonna get tweaked. Mike shared that because I said, well, what's gonna happen? That number's gonna change because this formula has age of building. Well, our age of building's gonna change with the, so. They did the math on it square footage. It's only gonna drop like four years on our overall age of our buildings. So it's not gonna be too significant, thank goodness. Um, but of that six hundred and what was it, seventy-four, five hundred and seventy of it is gonna go to your bond payment. We're gonna have about a hundred thousand left for the year. Here's what Ryan did very well. He's been building the LPFM budget and saving some of that money. So right now in the LPFM, uh, fund balance is six hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. So I had a panic attack going in twenty thirty-nine and we're gonna have buildings that are gonna need roofs and blah, 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 and a hundred thousand is not gonna come. Because he's built this up a little bit, we're gonna weather some storms here and I think we're gonna be okay. The other thing at Lake, and this is, I'm still working on the understanding of this, because even several of the state doesn't understand it. Is that we do have access to another hundred and thirty-some thousand with this bond, bonded, that we can play with. I have to get the understanding of that. So if we needed two hundred and thirty thousand next year and we didn't have that savings account, a fund balance, we could have access to two hundred thousand over here. He's already explained it to me a little bit. I told him, him and I are gonna sit down and visit. Uh, anyway, it is very complex. I needed you to see this, so you can look through this. A ten-year plan, obviously is going to change. It's gonna have some adaptations when this building project finishes. It's gonna also change some of the numbers on here because we're footage change, appears, our, age of building, those type of things. But this is a very important document from my past. It's really, it sets the stage, it's part of the strategic plan, it's where you're going. The biggest piece for me is I wanted you to know that I've gone to LPFM school this last week. And I am starting to understand what we've got going on, which is extremely not what. But I'm getting a grip on where we're at, so if we run into a pickle, I know where I could go to find some. Does that make any sense?
Yeah.
Changes your number. Yeah, it's a good and bad thing.
Yeah.
Because of the snow.
Okay, so, um, uh, motion was made by David, second by Nicole, Amy for the reservation, I'm gonna do a local vote. Laura, David?
Aye.
Amy? Myself, aye. Ronnie?
Aye.
Nicole, Carl, Brittany, huh? All right, uh, so, um, just a little bit of question here. Ten point five, whatever, report request, requests to be, um, as presented by Comstock. Is this in regards to the changes? Are we gonna table these two or are we going to?
These two items, we put them on there because I didn't know how you guys all get a feel. I felt like we needed to table both of them. It also hurt from them. They want to fence the numbers themselves, but we wanted to have it on here just in case. Wow, this was a heck of a deal. Let's just say yes. And so I think we should table them.
All right, so we're gonna, I'm asking for a motion to table ten point five. Your motion, David, second. Second by Laura, all those in favor say aye. Opposed? Uh, okay, um, ten point six, this is also gonna be tabled, tabled. This is a report request presented by GLG. Give a motion. Motion by Nicole, is there a second? Second by Brittany. Discussion, yes.
So the one thing I want to make sure you get clear, when I share this information with you tomorrow, under Comstock. Comstock's got its own number, but they are also in charge of all the subcontractors, so you're gonna see that under the Comstock portion. Does that make sense? Well, we had a guilty, so we said, well, what's all these other things? GLG is overseeing those stuffs, okay? I just want to make sure.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Um, and just, you know, as you mentioned, it's me, I think at the upon, depending you want to attend, um, their Thursday V C meetings. Um, you know, Tracy and Shannon are attending, but if you're available and you'd like to go see them tomorrow, your service is certainly welcoming. I would just ask to make sure if you don't have a form here, so if someone goes, just, you know, you can say, hey, I'm going, uh, to text it, tell us, we know. Um, you know, no responses, just so we don't end up in a bad situation, okay? Just be con, conscious of that, please. All right, so, uh, next for me, uh, Shannon's gonna be on vacation on Monday, August ninth, so he's asked, he asked him last week, nice to let Scott board it. He had a pre-plan, um, vacation with his family, so we're gonna look at meeting board meeting to that Wednesday evening on the eleventh, or, I'm sorry, ninth, ninth. Yeah, the eleventh, August eleventh. Does that work for everyone or majority of us? Anybody else? Not many, okay? Do you, do we want to look at?
Here's the other option. We could do Tuesday. I, he fell up there, kept over sometime then morning, we're cleaning up, we're gonna come over. About a four and a half hour trip. Hold, so I could do Tuesday night too. Cause that, if Tuesday night is better, I will do Tuesday night. I don't know if that matters, so.
Oh, that's great. Oh, that's great, that's, yeah, I might. I know we do have the F O, F O A P, so I, so, any of us that haven't either. Yeah, um. We need, I think we probably do need.
Well, so that's right, so I apologize for this, this thing's not scheduled and I'm in here, I look at in Wednesday, or, sorry, Friday night, I just sat down. I just told people, don't worry about it, I'm gonna do it in the morning, you know?
As long as we have any, like, yeah, I got a schedule, but it's good.
I did share with Brooke today, I was told by this board that I should have that.
Yes, yeah, as long as we can make a commitment here right now, and we have a form, you're not gonna be, if it's Trish's birthday, don't feel bad, if we add one, two, three, four, five.
That's still me.
And I might, if there's more.
Yeah, oh, I'm sorry, yeah, we can do four, so, um, yeah, I mean, we'll just keep the agenda like, you know, a lot of people aren't gonna be here.
Well, let's face it, tonight was on, we had presentations and all this, it's good, I mean, I just think it's important to me just because of the time you're here, we're getting started.
I agree, so we're gonna move on our next board meeting to August eleventh, six P M in the municipal media center. Um, Brooke, can you just send out a meeting invite for that, so we have a phone, so we have to respond, you know, the day you board, just to make sure for numbers. And just communicate that with me if you're not gonna be here. So like I said, no worries, we know there's adjustments, because I'm good form, we can get this done, so. Uh, so the policy committee will be meeting after that, uh, meeting, if we have enough people, and that is Amy, Nicole and Brittany. If there's policies we're in order, Shannon and Brooke will send those to you free or review and sooner rather than, we'd be advisable.
And the fall, one of the policies that we're gonna discuss tonight, but we were talking about concession stands, Tracy and I have met, there is a policy nine oh five five, and we wanna talk about it.
Okay, perfect, um, and if Tracy wants to be invited to that meeting, um, that would be great, so she can answer questions. Um, anything else came that we need to discuss today? All right, everybody, it's not that hot in here.
No, that was good.
Just a little, just a little sunny, so, hey, I appreciate you all tonight, um, for standing late, seven fifty-three, this is.
I'm gonna blame it on the contract. For Joe, one of the two, I have to say.
Thank you, appreciate it, guys. All right, time, time to break and then operations, you guys will be meeting right.